Hey Mayor, it's Ron. Can you hear me? Okay, you're live, so just know. All right, thank you.
Okay, well, do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob and seconded by Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our first item is the discussion of the lake level. So Ron, would you bring us up to speed on that? I think the main thing that we're interested in is how did we get to where we are now? And how do we make it, and where do we go from here?
Sure. I think there's been some confusion in the lake levels and maybe perhaps the direction that was given by council. We had been advertising since, I forgot the date, maybe Commissioner Weber can help me out, the three to five foot reduction in the lake. We have it on the website, we had it in the information that Valerie submitted and sent out. The board said up to five feet, I believe, no lower than five feet is actually what they said. So what ended up happening is we had a request, and the mayor may remember during the Chamber of Commerce that they would love to have their 10th anniversary polar plunge at the lake. And we knew that if we dropped the lake all the way to the five foot mark, that unless we just had a rainy season, which it looks like we did, that there would be little chance that it would drop back, or that we'd be able to raise the level back up. Donnie had mentioned that he needed three foot, nine inches in order to produce electricity. So it made sense for us to stick at about the three and a half foot, which is where we've been, I understand, since after Thanksgiving. We have, as y'all know, a 450 now, maybe higher, because we got our last bill from the folks down in Charlotte. Bill that we need to pay down at the dam. We've only produced about $250,000 worth of that in electricity. So those were some of the reasons behind keeping the lake at the three and a half feet. The idea was as soon as January 1st comes, the polar plunge, we would immediately drop the lake to the five foot level. We knew that cut down on the time. Clint did some checking with some of the folks. We knew we had at least two that would be perhaps impacted, they needed it a little deeper. But we also thought that we would be coming back to the board at some point to see about extending the timeframe. The Lake Advisory Board, and I saw Mark here, happened to talk about it and mentioned at that time that it was probably appropriate. However, I did not come back to this council, follow all the way back around to this board to say exactly what we were doing. There was a lot of talk about it. We thought everybody knew about it, but apparently that was not the case. So that sort of brings us up to speed, I think. So right now, we're a week away from a polar plunge, and then we feel that we can drop the lake almost immediately to five feet.
Mark, are you saying that the, did the LAB make a recommendation to alter our normal schedule on how we lower the lake?
Not necessarily the schedule, we just, we, I came to our meeting and asked about the pole, and I believe that I asked Clint if the lake, if that level would affect anybody working. And I think he told me to make sure that it didn't, or we checked that we're working, and that's kind of how we, how it was left.
Okay, is it, is it a fair statement to say that the Lake Advisory Board was okay with it as long as it didn't have a negative effect on contractors or people doing work?
Yes, but another thing we've always known and always talked about is that the contractors have 90 days to be able to do their work.
Right. Yeah, if there's anything I'm missing that we need to know.
We are where we are now, for whatever reason it is, I mean, I would just push that it to 90 days. If the lake's actually down.
Yeah, well, it's important to make sure that we leave here today with a plan that gives contractors time to finish what they're doing, but I think it's also important for us to understand how we got to where we are, so that we, so it doesn't happen again in the future.
Well, we had a good discussion, I mean, one of the poles, the lake drawdown as easy as possible. Really, we've never had a question about the polar plunge.
Yeah.
This is the first year also that we've moved the dates. Because we were trying to get the lake up for Roman Ball Resort.
Right, right.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
So last year, because I know we were down seven, the polar plunge was moved to the end, to the pool. So was that planned ahead, to do that because the lake was going to be down?
Well, we've never been involved in any decisions for the polar plunge.
Kat is here, she's sort of representing the polar plunge group, but yeah, the, last year, because the lake was so far down, it was moved to the pool. This is the 10th anniversary of the polar plunge, and the difference, Kat, you can jump in here, but the difference in attendance is somewhere between 20 or 30 to 400 when you go from the pool to the lake. And I think the idea was that the 10-year anniversary needed to be on the lake. Is that correct?
I don't have any problem trying to do everything we can to accommodate the polar plunge, but my question is, you know, the, how we move the lake up and down is always sensitive, and is always, whatever we do to bring it down affects people, and what we do to bring it up affects people. And the one thing that we had agreed on, knowing that we couldn't accommodate, that we wouldn't have a solution that was perfect for everybody, was that the one thing we could do was let everybody know and keep everybody in the loop all the time. And I think if we have a situation like this again, probably where we need a quick answer, the best route may be to come directly to council and let us make that decision, because we catch the heat.
Well, we certainly can do that. You know, I think, you certainly can blame me, I thought I was keeping within the three to five recommendation, and that apparently is not the case, so.
If I may add, there was never a three to five recommendation from this council. The Lake Advisory Board discussion concentrated on the five foot mark. The discussion in this room concentrated on the five foot mark. Dean stood here during that discussion and stated clearly that the normal during the three-year drawdown is four and a half to five feet. My motion was not lower than five feet, and after discussion added the phrase, except in the case of an emergency, which afterwards it would be brought back to that five foot level. There was never three feet mentioned. Now, where that came from, it came after the council decision, and somebody brought it into play and completely circumvented the council decision.
So now that we know where it started, or what created the issue, we need to solve it. You know, there's been some correspondence from the mayor and other things, and my recommendation is in concert with that would be to leave it where it's at right now, and then the day of January 1, lower it to five feet and leave it there until March 1st would be the proper way to accommodate these contractors, allow them to get the work done.
We've got, since we've got a number of contractors and probably some homeowners here too, do we're leaving it to the five, or the five foot down level to March 1st, is that, does that accommodate everybody? Jay, can you get your work done? Okay, I know, I know there's a potential for, we've had seasons when we had a lot of rain, and you just, and I know it's hard to know for sure, and I think that might be something that we can look at as well, but as much as we love the rowers and love to see them coming and love what it does for Roman Ball Resort, we've got to balance these things, and I think our homeowners probably come first. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jay.
I was going to ask about the weather, Jay, if that, how much that would have effect on that, and we're talking about now, instead of providing 90 days, we're talking about providing 60 days. And really, by the time they get it down, it dries out, you're talking about probably 52 days or something like that. So that, you know, I agree totally with Mayor Pro Tem, that we want to accommodate everybody, but we've got, also, we've got to, you know, here's the thing, for me, but we have property owners that pay lots of taxes, and we have property owners that spend lots of money to keep our lake in better condition than what it could be. With some of the projects we have going this year that I'm familiar with, are big projects, and going to fix a lot of problems that we've got around the lake, with some of the big problems they're doing. And we've got to accommodate our citizens. I'm totally 100% for the polar plunge, and I love seeing the rowers and knowing the benefit that the resort and the restaurants and everybody else around gets for that. Kat, I mentioned this, maybe a turkey dunk instead of a polar plunge, that you could do Thanksgiving weekend, I'm not being funny, you know? There's more people in town, it could be something that could be interest generated, you could do the, you could do the plunge over Thanksgiving weekend, that four-day weekend maybe, and that might be a solution there. But I think we're going to have to, that doesn't solve this year, but I think we've got to get ourselves a point of starting date and stop date, and that's, you know, that's what it has to be.
Yeah. Jonathan, you've got some projects going on on the lake, does March 1st, does that work for you, or do you know?
March 1st will work for me. The thing I have is that we have not been made aware of any of this. What ends up happening is that we have clients and dates in which we schedule these things in the three and a half feet. We have, I don't recall ever seeing three and a half feet. And there's nothing that we can do at three and a half feet. We're talking about that on January 1st, we're going to drop it down to five feet. For me, the issue is, is that if we bring it back up on March 1st, how will it take to get down to five feet? Because it's a long time, just to get it down to the three and a half feet this year.
Donnie, we can drop it fast if we need to, can't we?
We need to get it down to see exactly how fast, safely, we can drop it, because he had some concerns with letting it fall and letting it drop too quickly.
Okay.
But when we took it down to get to the three feet, we used no floodgates at all. We just ran through the generators till we got to that point. It was from November the 27th, I think we started when we were at 60 feet down decently.
Okay, so it took you how long to, if we're three and a half feet down now?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, so what does it take us to get another foot and a half?
So that was three feet in three days?
Roughly, from the 27th to when we started, we started to the 2nd.
Okay, so if we, okay, so if we start on January 1st, we'll have it on, it'll be down a couple of days.
We'll have to use the floodgates to get it down quickly.
If you do it running, you generate, how long does it take?
It depends on how much it rains between, I mean, we had an inch and a half, and it came up five inches overnight, we weren't running, and it's upping slowly today, it was roughly a third of an inch an hour yesterday, but it's nowhere near that rate.
Well, I guess we're going to have to have a situation where when we, you know, we don't need to have to deal with this as many times as it's been dealt with over the 27 years I've been here. And my opinion is, we have a schedule, and we just understand that for 90 days, we're not going to generate any power. And we're not going to have activities that, you know, that interfere with the 90 days and allowing our citizens and contractors and people the time they need to get projects finished.
Well, just understand that you might have a $250,000 deficit in your hydro fund at the end of that period. I just, y'all need to make, be aware of the consequences of that, those kind of actions.
John?
Essentially, this is what happens for us. You guys drop it down to the three and a half foot mark, from that point until, that point until you get it down to the five foot after January 1st, essentially is then useless for us.
Might as well have been up the whole time.
Might as well have been up this whole time, you're doing whatever you want, because we can't do any work when it's down this, when it's up this high.
Okay, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I think that Stephen can concur with that on a project that he's working on.
Okay.
And the projects that we need to remake repairs on the boat houses, we just haven't done, and have to tell our clients that we're starting it until it gets up to five foot.
Okay.
If you're down to five foot, if it doesn't, then we're going to have to wait another three years.
Okay, when did you guys find out the plan to keep it up to New Year's Day?
I found out from Jay about two and a half weeks ago, maybe Clint, I'm not sure, between the two of them.
I found out from Jay too, I didn't find out from anybody that made any decisions.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm Steve McCruitt, I'm doing a project that Mr. Warner engineered on Paradise Point, and there's about 500 feet of riprap stabilization, slightly less than that. Down at the dock, and there's a rebuilding of the board wall and a new dock substantially, like almost, what, 180 feet or so down the shoreline, repairing all the rock walls. And when I started talking with the landowners, David and Darryl Mounds, in April or May, they asked Jay and I for a commitment. So I called Jay, and we assumed that the lake was coming down Thanksgiving week, and Mr. Mounds through emails has been asking me if we could promise that we would have the work done, and we both committed. And as Jonathan just said, I've got six projects, not one, so if I tell someone I'm going to do it, I'm going to honor my word. But now, he's asked me, and I'm, and I can, through emails, I'm saying, I'm basically throwing the towel like, "Look, run the bus," and saying, "We lost six weeks' worth of work here." And I've got pictures, if you'd like to see them, but I actually had guys in waiters tearing the dock down this week, just to get some. And as Jonathan said, the other picture shows the water lapping the walls, they're, they can't do anything. And there's about a three-foot buffer, a large stone piled up against the bottom of the wall. And I told Mr. Mounds, I said, "You can't risk a guy standing on that, even when the lake comes down another foot or so." I'm not even sure how comfortably they can work there, because that's very dangerous. But as it stands right now, we've basically done nothing. And I have a little bit of an issue with, or a little bit of a hesitancy to say that I can complete this work from January 1st to March 1st, especially if we get bad weather. So that as far as the contractors go, like Jonathan and I and Jay, it really puts the pressure on you, because life remembers the first thing you promised them. That's just human nature. They're going to remember in April and May, you promised you were going to get the work done.
Yeah.
So if we get much rain and we get much, because this can't all be done at once, he's got to repair the wall, and I've got to go in and frame the dock, and he's got to come in and put the riprap under it, or they're going to be crawling around on their hands and knees, then we have to come back in a decade. So it's going to be like a four-stage process in that area, just to complete it.
Counsel, should we consider two more weeks to March 15?
Well, I think we may end up there, but I think right now, it may be a little too early to make that commitment, let's see, you know, let's kind of, I know, and you know, everything, whatever we do to accommodate one affects somebody else, because the folks at Roman Ball are having to tell their rowers when the lake's coming up. So, but I think that they can, to a point, they can accommodate their rowers with the lake down, they have to put some platforms out there.
Let me ask you this, if we, when you get near the end of your work, the last couple of weeks, can you operate then with the lake up to three and a half feet?
I could actually dock what I'm doing, the project I've got, I could put the decking on it with the water out of the ponds.
Okay, so you, you feel comfortable that you can get what you need to get done if we leave the lake down to March 1st and then start bringing it up on, or start bringing it up?
If I had my wish, and I think Jonathan would agree, and I think Jay, I had my wish, and the best scenario would be for us to have someone to communicate with, and we have no call and communicate. And say, hey, you know, guys know, you live here, it rained this many weeks, it came a snow, and if there's a snow and it lies on the seashore or on the shoreline for a week, you can't, you can't work, you know, you can't stand on that.
Well, let's, let's keep an accurate record of that, if we can, Clint, between now and then, so if that scenario happens, we get, we come to the last week or two of February, and say, you know, it's just not going to be done, well, we can go back and say, all right, these are the days that we couldn't work. And I don't know, as a contractor, you're used to doing that, so let's, let's keep up with that, because we want the folks at Roman Ball to understand, you know, that we did give them all the consideration we could in making this decision.
I would, I would suggest that the contractors, they keep a log, a diary, and Clint keep one too.
Yeah, because you could, yeah.
I have one more question for Clint. Clint, if we go to March 1st, what are we going to get into on concrete curing issues from state regulations and stuff like that?
It's going to depend on when they pull.
That's what I'm saying, so they pour February the 28th.
Or it's going to be in trouble.
So, so see there, that's a big issue. How many days does state require? Which is ridiculous, but that's beside the side. Concrete cures just well underwater, it does out of it, but, you know, that doesn't make any sense, but that's the rule. Is there any, is there any leeway in that? Do you know?
The only thing that you can do is to, you know, sandbag it and keep it dry as the water comes up, and that's, that's not listed in most cases.
No, so see, there's another issue.
Yeah, I think the requirement is the lake water can't come in contact with it during that 28 days. So if the lake water's like right here, and the concrete's right here, the footer, I mean, and it takes another day or two, it's okay, you know?
Yes, sir.
It's already had that 28 days.
My name's Chuck Stokes, and most of you got an email from me, Jay is doing my wall situation, Mr. Porter has just described one boat, all the way.
Yeah.
To be halfway up our wall from a stamp of cure.
Wake, from a wake. Yeah, yeah.
And I do have a concern that we're going from 90 days to 60 days, I mean, and we all know 60 days is not realistic. It will not be 60 days. We have rain, we're going to have more rain this week. So I would ask that, at the very least, and I appreciate the polar plunge, I appreciate all of it, we've already spent money, cannot be recused. If it doesn't get down, if it does not get done in this season, then there will be a wall collapse, 75 feet, my fault. There's no question about it. After the fact, we will, there's a 75 feet collapse, falls on the highway in our area.
Good.
Josh, if I'm dealing with, how many feet of wall is that? No, I mean, I mean, all the way around, almost, almost a thousand feet, and it will collapse before it comes down.
I've been on both sides of it as a contractor and a rower.
Yeah.
I've had my feet cold a long time, a long time, and it didn't affect me really.
Okay, more so as a rower than as a contractor.
I mean, I was still able to row, and then became a contractor and...
Kat, can I ask, one more question?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the revenue that the organization's received from, from the plunge generally?
It's nothing in comparison to what we call to promote, but it's something that we try and do for the town, to build the entrepreneurs of the town, to help them grow their business, and time generates where they turn that time here. We bought, I think, 4,000 dollars, minus what it cost to the contractors. I want to ask the question, if somebody can just clarify this for me, but help me out to understand this. The year 1415, our plunge was at the lake, okay?
I didn't hear that, say it again, Kat, Kat, come up, yeah.
The year of 1415, our plunge was at the lake.
Yeah.
The next year, which was 1516, was a scheduled drop for the lake.
Right.
Are we right? 1617, last year, we had dam repairs. And this year is a scheduled, I'm not understanding if it was a year, it's right now, we're looking at every other year that we're dropping, putting the lake down.
We wouldn't have had two scheduled, I don't think.
No, we scheduled.
No, it wasn't two scheduled, the year 1516 was a scheduled.
No, this, this year's scheduled, the last two years that we dropped have been the dam repairs and inspections.
That's right, we weren't aware.
About 1415, okay? 1415, we had the plunge at the lake.
Put myself as the target.
1516, we had a scheduled dam, okay?
No.
1616, the year before, we had it at the, at the lake, the plunge was at the lake. That's absolutely guaranteed, positive, it was at the lake, full lake. 1516 was a scheduled dam, and I'll go back over, 1617, last year, we did the dam repair. This year is another scheduled dam, right?
This is the three-year cycle.
Yeah, we've got a three-year cycle.
How is that a three-year cycle?
The, the reason we have the three-year cycle is so people can plan, they have the permits to get, and line up contractors and all that. So we, we had a discussion about whether we would lower it at all this year, because we had lowered it so much last year. And as it turns out, there were a lot of people who couldn't, didn't have time to get their permits, or the contractors were busy with other projects, and it just didn't work to have them compress their dates. So that's why, that's why we have the three-year drawdown, but then occasionally, if something happens with the dam and when it needs attention, then we have to bring it down.
Totally understand, but what I just went over is not for years, it's every other year, we get a, anybody wants to look at here, this is how it is, it was every other year.
Well, I, Mark, is that?
It's been every year for the last three, I believe.
Right, yeah. But there were two, two of those were the dam repairs, and that's what made it, okay.
So the one prior to that first, she said 1516 was scheduled, but it wasn't, it would have been 1415 would have been scheduled.
1415, the lake was at full.
All right, not going to argue.
All right. Okay, so I guess, yes, sir.
Just, just from my understanding, so if we get to March 1st, there's been 15 days of rain or snow, can we assume that this board will come back together to look at extending this?
That would be my intention, I'm, you know, one of five.
We have to, we have to apply common sense to this, you know, I mean, bottom line, we have to apply common sense to this. If we, if we have rain that's, you know, out of the ordinary, we have to, we have to make a decision to deal with it.
My recommendation would be in the February council meeting, go ahead and bring it up at that time.
Yeah, because you're two weeks, basically two weeks out at that point.
So that'd be two weeks even before March 1st, and go ahead and make the decision then.
And we're going to need good communication from you, from you folks doing, doing the work, you know? I mean, we're going to go by what you say, I mean, you're representing the property owners.
Yeah, and y'all, y'all understand how we're being pulled and tugged in different directions, so please, you know, when you've got pretty weather, give it your, you know, full assault.
I would like to ask a couple of questions of the contractors here and of Kim Warner. Do you, are you aware of any other contractors or jobs that you know about that aren't represented here?
I don't know if anybody's worked, can't do it, seawall.
Clinton?
I know they've meant a couple of contractors.
But what do they, they're just putting riprap in, right, in, right.
And they've got, I think, I think that's mostly what they're going to do, their original plans called for was some pretty extensive seawall work, but I think now they're kind of backed off on that, or they're going to do riprap and some pretty steps.
Okay, so this wouldn't affect them as much as it would some others?
If they, if they do the work from the land side, which they do, they'll be doing, it probably won't be a problem. Most cases, that's, that's not, you know, the projects that are out there, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Another, we cannot dredge past March 1st, is that correct? Because of what the trout season, whatever? What does, leaving the lake down beyond March 1st, does that create any issues for us with the state and the trout issue? Okay. Well, having heard everything I've heard, and I appreciate the economic contribution of the polar plunge, but I would, and I'm reluctant to leave it open-ended, to be honest about it, when we leave here today. I would, not a motion yet, but I would recommend that we consider going to that March 15th date, start dropping it immediately, even the last... March 15th date, uh, start dropping it immediately, even the last hour of the polar plunge, or, or during the polar plunge, start dropping it, and go to that five-foot level as soon as possible, and leave it there at least until March 15th. If the contractors can come online and say they're all done, then we can bring it up, but I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended the other direction, so...
I don't have any problem with March 15th, I mean, but there again, I think we still need to discuss it in February's council meeting, just to make sure.
Well, if they've had great weather and they're, and they're ahead of schedule, and, you know, we can work some back to, to accommodate the, the rowers, then we, you know, we can do that, but that's not the priority.
Okay, yeah, I know y'all come in ahead of schedule all the time, don't you?
Terrible, terrible.
You had a question, Mark?
Well, I, I wish somebody was here from Rumlin Ball, because I think the biggest issue with Rumlin Ball last time was that we were down south.
Right.
The higher, the better off, but five feet.
Yeah.
By the way, they dealt with it when it was that way before.
If, if, the last couple of weeks, fellas, if we, if we come up to four feet, it'll hit they too, because it, you know, Rumlin Ball is so shallow up there, that just a foot makes a big difference in, uh, you know, where the water is for them. Yes, sir?
Uh, if, if you, I've been taking a tape measure from every side of the wall to see what a foot and a half is gonna give you. If we come up to four foot, Jay, Jay wouldn't go stand there. It's actually up on the wall in places.
But, but I mean, in, in, on March 1st, if we came up to four feet on March 1st, and then...
Yeah, we're, we're certain, we'd be okay with that.
You think that would probably, at this point, you think that would probably be okay? Yeah, and that's what, that's what we can discuss, yeah, we, you know, we can make that determination in February, but it would be good to let Rumlin Ball know that that's what we're, that that's our goal, with it, well, our goal is to bring it up March 1st, but if we can't do that, we're looking at maybe having it at four feet, so that, that would have a little less impact on their rowers. Is that, uh, Kim, what do you think?
Well, in theory, if you start working at the bottom of the wall and work your way up, you're still gonna be in the water for it.
Yeah.
I can't speak for that, though, that I can jog on the rest of it, just three and three and a half feet for the past 30 days.
Yeah.
If you brought, you're starting, you've got to start at the bottom in a lot of cases, four-footing, and you can't four-foot it, you can't farm there.
Yeah.
If you brought it up a foot and it's at three and a half feet now, you're, you're at four.
Yeah.
You're six inches less than we got now, and that is totally insignificant. I mean, totally unillable over there.
Okay, so Rumlin Ball would, would need to plan on the possibility of not, of the water being down at five feet until, um, the middle of March.
The bulk of what we're gonna do over there, there won't be any drive shore stand on it, it's not...
Okay.
Can we ask Ron to contact them and give them notification?
Yeah.
But one more, do, do we need to address the boat traffic issue and wakes during, in these construction areas?
Um, I, I don't know, I know in some, I don't know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you guys are talking about, but I know in some areas, if we get a lot of wind, it's about as bad as, uh, the boat traffic, so, um, I don't know, do, does, is the, what is the boat traffic doing? Do we need to keep boat traffic off the lake for...
If you're down to five feet, there is boat traffic.
Well, we also get all that high wind down the main channel anyway, and, and I know I get some horrendous waves in front of my house and Blaine's house coming down at main, I don't know if you're off on, kind of, point or something, so... But we also, we also need to consider all the folks that have planned to do work that don't have a permit or did not have to get a permit on their, on their lake structures or seawalls, like just patching something here and there. We have to consider all of that.
Yep.
And, and we haven't yet, it's all just been the contractors and the big jobs. But you've got a lot out there that have planned things, so...
Well, we, you know, we, we have a, a, a system in place to notify everybody and things like this, and Clint, I wanna encourage you to use that when we, or Ron, or whoever is, uh, uh, when these decisions are made, and the decisions we make today, just get the word out, let everybody, let everybody know.
What system is it you're speaking out of, I just wanna make sure that we're in the loop?
You can sign up on our...
We got, we were notified by Jay.
You can sign up on our website, uh, there's a link there to click and, and fill out the information. It's, uh, I wish Valerie was here, but that's our, our method of communication, it's an email blast to all the residents.
And you can all, we also have, is it NICSIL that the police department uses?
Right, we use Code Red and NICSIL in emergencies.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I get the, I get them all the time. I didn't get one about this, but I, uh, get them about lots of things.
Where do we sign up? We have to go online.
At the front desk up here, a lady can show you how, tell you how to do it. Michelle.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we leave the, uh, lake down from, we start lowering on New Year's Day. Uh, we can do it even start in the morning, as far as that goes, and we leave it down to March 15th, and that we also, in the February meeting, have a full discussion at that time as well.
Yeah, we, that we...
It's the progress.
We'll revisit it at the, uh, February meeting to consider if we need to modify that.
It's gonna be real important that you, you contractors and, uh, Mr. Warner communicate with Clint, so we've got good information, uh, in our February board meeting to... Second Tuesday.
Six o'clock.
Yeah. You said March 15th?
Yes.
Okay. Did you specify the footage level?
Five feet.
Okay, five feet?
Yes.
Not low or not high? We're going to at least five feet?
At least five.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I second your motion.
You've got to understand, we do not have that small generator, it's, uh...
But to get me into that five feet and to keep it not above that, I'm gonna have to go below that.
Right, that's fine.
I'm gonna be down five feet, five feet, eight, 10 inches or so.
Yeah, it's gonna be more than that.
So I just wanted to make everybody aware.
Okay.
Right.
I understand.
Done, you can't maintain it at five feet because of, I guess, whether the generator opens and the water comes in?
Well, no, it's just, so water coming in, we get rain, you know?
To hold it at five feet, it's gotta go below it.
Can you work, can you work with a five to six-foot level? If I said five to six feet?
Could you do five to five and a half feet? Can you do that? Could you do it more efficiently if you were at the dam house? Yeah, okay, all right, so five to five and a half feet?
Five to six.
Five to six, okay. All right. We'll try to keep it as close to the five as you can.
I second that motion, March 15th with five to six-foot level.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Since you guys are all here, I wanted to think, could I, uh, lay something on my plate as the Lake Advisory Board is, is to try to create a, um, either like a lake level team or something that, and try to bring all the variables on one sheet of paper or one thought process for...
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea.
Because really, I mean, I, I mean, we'd never, even at the Lake Advisory Board, we'd never have thought about income coming in from lake level, and I'm not trying to, until this discussion, what level the lake needed to be to produce power.
Yeah, and, and I think we need to, I think we need to rate these things, well, the, the, the income has a, has a value, property owners have a value, the, uh, Rumlin Ball and the, uh, um, polar plunge, but we need, we need to, we need to rank those and have kind of a pecking order there, I guess.
And you're ranking, and take into consideration how long it takes to get a permit from the state. You'd be invited to the meeting.
Yeah.
So, so I'd like, I'd like to do that, you know, 'cause at, at each one of these meetings, it's always an emergency, it's always a different emergency.
Yep, yep.
Um, and just like we're sitting here, Blaine, Blaine's telling me that in the past, they used to, we used to not drop the lake until in January 1st.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and the reason that we drop it near Thanksgiving used to be, it's really just habit, now it'd be because of the, uh, the Christmas parade.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't drop it until after the first Saturday in December.
Right, and, and now we don't even do that anymore. So I mean, really, my, my question is, why don't we drop it a month before Thanksgiving?
Well, I, I think one thing that may be happening is that we have more people working on their, uh, seawalls and so forth now than we used to.
The biggest reason is revenue.
Yeah.
But we used to drop it every year. Lake was dropped every year until about 15, 18 years.
I think we made more money on our, on our, on our generation then than we do now, considerably more money.
Dale, you have a question?
I lose irrigation when the lake goes down, so...
You lose irrigation when the lake goes down?
Anything before, and this year, what's the meaning of that?
Well, get, get, get on, get on the list, so...
Mark said he'd have your permission to...
Yes.
I think that should be a function...
Do we need to make a motion and give them direction to do that?
If, uh...
Well, normally, we do task the Lake Advisory Board, and I don't, uh, and I, William, does that fit under our special agenda topic of the lake level?
Sure, I think so, yes.
Okay.
Uh, then I make a motion, we support Chairman Helm's request, uh, to this, discuss that issue.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, there you go, you got it. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, our next item is a discussion concerning our dredging contract. And I think there's some question that there may be some legal things going on here, and it may be good for us to do this in, uh, closed session.
That's correct.
Yeah, uh, do you have a motion?
It's right there. A motion, I make a motion to enter into closed session in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11 Sub A Sub 3 for attorney-client privilege or legal claims.
I'll second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's good.